If you will please arrive to the public's meeting order. Counselor Schleber will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Nita, would you call over first?
Counselor Lorenz.
Here.
Counselor Schleber.
Here.
Counselor Martinez.
Here.
Excuse me, Counselor Schrader.
Here.
Mayor Garcia.
Here.
Or Mr. Clark.
Next item on the agenda is the approval of the consent agenda.
I'm going to approve the consent agenda.
I have a couple of modifications to request as well. One is the resolution for check signing. I don't know if you guys have seen emails back and forth. I think we need discussion on that before having it up for approval. There are some concerns with control issues, ethical issues. So I don't know if we need to add a discussion to the agenda to do that, to discuss that. And the other one is I would like to request an executive session with council to discuss some financial concerns. Due to the professional obligations as CPA and fiduciary agent of City of Montevista Funds and at the strong recommendation of the city's auditors, I have been, I feel strongly that I need to discuss some issues with you. And due to the nature of some of the things that I would like to discuss, I feel an executive session would be appropriate. And out of fear of retaliation and hostile work environment, I also feel that it needs to be an executive session. I don't know, yeah, I don't know how this works, but because we would not be in the executive session. I know, I know. So I'm going to defer to the incoming council if you would like to so make any modifications to discuss the check signing. And if you would like to go into executive session.
Does he address it?
So we have a motion to amend the agenda with discussion of Resolution 1-2018 for discussion on the authorization for check signing and for an executive session at the end of the meeting.
Excuse me, Madam Mayor. Put a word here, what would be the qualified nature of the executive session that we call under color of statute?
I believe there are sensitive personnel issues that I would like to discuss as well as, like I said, to protect me from retaliation and hostile work environment. Because of some of the things that I need to discuss, I feel that it's appropriate.
So I guess my question would be the legality of this. I mean, we just went through a training where we had a SIRS attorney talk to us very bluntly about the chain of command, and it was quite unequivocally put into perspective. Now, I'm not saying that there are any issues that need to be discussed, and I'm definitely, we need to discuss issues, but we have to be very careful how we proceed here because of the legal ramifications of what we're doing and the precedent that we're set. So I'm just, I'm a little bit curious. I believe there would have been opportunity to, at the very least, notify council. I think that would have been appropriate. We could have taken the appropriate measures to make sure that we're within the legal bounds. And I don't know exactly how this is going to play out since we haven't been able to understand the legality of it.
I do understand your concerns. I did look at the charter, and I know that the SIRS attorneys told you that was inappropriate for you guys to discuss matters with personnel. But the charter specifically states, or the municipal code specifically states that individual councilors shall not ordinarily have no direct dealings with current staff operations. And then it goes on to say that any provision of these procedures and rules or order may be temporarily suspended at any meeting of the council by a majority vote. So I'm not sure what the SIRS lawyer, but I mean, I just don't see how, if this is in our municipal code, this is in our charter. It sounds to me that you have the legal right to vote on whether or not you want to suspend whatever rule she is applying here.
So just going along with what Joe is saying, I'll defer to the city attorney if you feel that this would fall into any of our categories for executive session. If it's a, for receiving legal advice on specific legal questions, or...
Madam Mayor, this is the first I've heard of it. And if, one of the things that we did discuss with Tammy, who came down and talked to us from SIRS, is that if there was an issue that a department head or other employee needed to discuss, that they didn't feel comfortable going through their chain of command because of perhaps some illegal regularities, they needed to come to the city attorney. That was the next step. I don't know anything about the concerns. And I'm reluctant without looking at the charter, without having time to research this, without having time to discuss issues with SIRS. And there are some other confidential background here. I would not feel comfortable recommending at this juncture an executive session until I could do that research and provide a more comprehensive opinion to do this, to my, to my client.
Well, that being said, I can address the council in public then. I'll refrain from using names. I will just, I guess, address that here since that's my only option.
Well, I don't think she's saying it's not an option. I just think she's saying that she would like to visit with you to discuss.
Well, there's some ongoing other issues, as you all know, that, you know, I would have to, we would have to do that in a pretty formal setting. So we would have to get together to do that with my attorney.
Which is perfectly acceptable to me. I'd rather approach this cautiously just because I'm not aware of what's going on. So that, and obviously council can do what they choose to do. My advice would be just get some time so I can discuss it and we can perhaps work through this before we set. I'm not saying we shouldn't set an executive session or that we won't, but I just think tonight I don't have time to look at it.
So go ahead and, I guess, say whatever you would like to say.
Well, we, it's on my part.
And then please get with Karen and...
I mean, we've been attempting to, but...
Okay. And like she said, it's not like we're saying no. It's just make sure we have all of our ducks in a row and everything, please.
Okay.
Okay. So we still have an amendment about discussion on the authorization for check signing.
I'll rescind my motion to approve the consent agenda. And I will motion to approve the modified consent agenda to add a discussion item for Resolution 1-2018, Authorization for Signing, or Check Signing.
Any other discussion? Okay, Nita?
Counselor Lorenz.
Aye.
Counselor Schleber.
Aye.
Counselor Schrader.
Aye.
Counselor Martinez.
Aye.
Mayor Garcia.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Okay, so next item on the agenda is exiting council.
So on behalf of all the city staff, first of all, we'd like to thank you for serving on the City of Montevista Council. As your term of service, excuse me, ends and you leave this council, we, the City of Montevista staff, want you to know that your commitment to the city has been greatly appreciated. It is through community leaders like you that have made the City of Montevista able to provide service to the citizens and to help make a community a better place. Debbie Garcia, we want to thank you for your nine years of dedicated service. Carol Schrader, thank you for your six years of dedicated service. Jason Lorenz, thank you for your six years of dedicated service. And Matt Martinez, thank you for your four years of dedicated service. You've each made a difference within the City of Montevista, and now you will start a new adventure. We want you all to know that we wish you the very best and the brightest future. May you all have many successes in your future, and may you always remember how much you were appreciated by the staff here at the City of Montevista and the citizens of Montevista.
Debbie, I'd like to present you on behalf of the city.
So it's a little plan.
Name it. For you.
So with that being said, thank you again, all of you, for everything that you have done. Thank you.
Next item on our agenda is the oath of office for our new city council.
John, you want us over here? Um, Dale? You can raise your right hand. And repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Dale Becker.
Do solemnly swear.
I solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States of America.
Of the United States of America.
The Constitution of the State of Colorado.
Constitution of the State of Colorado.
And the Charter and Ordinance of the City of Montevista.
And the Charter and Ordinance of the City of Montevista.
And that I will faithfully perform the duties.
And I will faithfully perform the duties.
Of office of mayor.
Office of mayor.
Which I'm about to enter.
Which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations. Victor Segala?
It's right here, Dale. Okay.
Please raise your right hand. And repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Victor Segala.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Of America.
Of America.
The Constitution of the State of Colorado.
The Constitution of the State of Colorado.
And the Charter and Ordinance of the City of Montevista.
And the Charter and Ordinance of the City of Montevista.
And that I will faithfully perform the duties.
And that I will faithfully perform the duties.
Of the office of council member.
Of the office of council member.
Which I'm about to enter.
Which I'm about to enter.
And Gary Johnson. Please raise your right hand. And repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Gary Johnson.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States of America.
Of the United States of America.
And the Constitution of the State of Colorado.
And the Constitution of the State of Colorado.
And the Charter and Ordinance of the City of Montevista.
And the Charter and Ordinance of the City of Montevista.
And that I will faithfully perform the duties of office.
And that I will faithfully perform the duties of this office.
Of council member.
Of council member.
Which I'm about to enter.
Which I'm about to enter.
Please, can I ask to hear me now? All right, okay. Congratulations, sir.
And Mayor, you can proceed with the agenda. The next item on our agenda would be the appointment of Mayor Pro Tem.
My appointment, it is due appointment. Victor Segala.
So do you believe there's a nomination and a vote that goes with the Mayor Pro Tem?
I believe that's correct.
So going along with the lines of the mayor, I would nominate Victor Segala.
Second. And I guess I second as well.
So Counselor Johnson?
Aye.
Counselor Schleber?
Aye.
Counselor Segala?
Aye.
Mayor Becker?
Aye.
Motion carries.
You ready? The selection of board representation. Other board may be assembled and will need representation time to be assembled. How do we do that?
So you can call for a motion of what the board would like to do or you can make your statement that you would want to run.
Okay, so we can call for that. But I was concerned with tableing this until the next meeting so we can fill the empty seat before we carry on.
Do we need a vote?
Is any, have we got any discussion on that?
I, I personally would be very comfortable with that. And with that being said, I make the motion to table this until the next meeting and we can fill this seat.
Second.
Counselor Segala?
Aye.
Counselor Johnson?
Aye.
Counselor Schleber?
Aye.
Mayor Becker?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Oath of office for Officer Joshua Hill.
What color wear you, Josh? Did you bring anybody with you?
Yes, sir.
I haven't come home. Josh, Joshua came to us just a month ago. He's already been in training because of the holidays. Doing really well in his FTO program. Been certified police officer about a year.
I've been certified as a police officer since twenty thirteen.
For three years, okay. And in jail?
And I was in the jail for those three years.
All the time, okay. So he's been at Alamosa's Sheriff's Office for that entire time. So he comes with a lot of experience, not a lot of road experience, but he's been a deputy and dealt with the bad guys. So we're happy to have him and his wife and son. Are you going up? Would you like to pin your obi?
So everybody, this is my wife Hannah and my son, Roman. He is seventeen months and just a couple of days now. So I've been married to my wife for about three years now. It'll be three years in February. And we've had a good life in the valley for the short time we've been here. Look forward to being more years. So thank you for our blessing. Always served in the community with us abilities.
Josh has been sworn in, so we can do his job for last month, but so we can kind of honor him and welcome him officially when we can do it again. So are you ready? So I state your name.
I, Joshua Hill.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
Or affirm.
Or affirm.
Under the penalty of perjury.
Under the penalty of perjury.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
And the laws of the United States of America.
And the laws of the United States of America.
And of the State of Colorado. And the Charter and ordinances.
And the Charter and ordinances.
Of the City of Montevista.
Of the City of Montevista.
And the County of Rio Grande.
And the County of Rio Grande.
And that I will faithfully perform.
And that I will faithfully perform.
The duties of police officer.
The duties of police officer.
For the City of Montevista.
For the City of Montevista.
And the County of Rio Grande.
And the County of Rio Grande.
To which I have been appointed.
To which I have been appointed.
And upon which I'm about to enter.
And upon which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations.
Thank you, sir.
Good. I'm ready. Thank you.
Okay, we've got the discussion of nominations of the vacant council seat. So for the vacant seat, it was my thought that we would have letters of interest sent in, so we'll discuss this after, I think this, but, City of Montevista, city council will be accepting letters of interest to fill the vacancy to city council. All letters must be submitted to Montevista City Clerk no later than January 16th, 2018 at 12:00 p.m. Council will appoint someone to the vacant seat at the council meeting on January 18th, 2018. Any discussion?
I think that's a good idea, personally. I don't know what the rest think.
I agree. I agree. That's, we need some time for the public to be aware of what's going on and to submit their application. And I think that works out just fine, and then we can vote at the next meeting.
Do you need, that's it? I think that was an affirmation, so. Quirpul, published at advertisement, county's correction, and move forward. You need this back in the end. Okay, now we're to citizen comments and special presentations. Yes, ma'am.
I would like to thank the prior mayor, Debbie Garcia. Probably did the best job a mayor could have done. And we're very grateful for you being the mayor of the City of Montevista.
And Mayor, if you would say your name.
My name is Gullinda Archuleta Velarde.
Anybody else? Let's see. Okay, no other citizen comments? Go to public hearings.
There are no public hearings tonight, Mayor.
Licensed liquor renewals?
There are no liquor license tonight.
Resolutions? 1-2018 Authorization for Check Signing?
And we amended that to include a discussion, correct?
That's correct.
Ordnances?
There, so on the resolutions, if you would like to go ahead and carry on that discussion in your packet, you'll see that the way that the current signature page is for authorization. If council would like to carry on that discussion at this time.
So we have read right here is that in order of succession Forrest Nyerberg, Nita Vance, Heather Hapson, Robert Vance, and Dale Becker, and then now Victor Segala as the Mayor Pro Tem. Is the order of succession at this point. I believe there was an issue raised about how the city charter reads versus what is on this page.
According to city manager's email, there are some definite problems with the list that some on that maybe shouldn't be and some that should be added. There was a suggestion of appointing a treasurer which seems somewhat inappropriate or unnecessary if all we need is an extra signatory.
Well, so just to give you a little bit of background on that, last December, beginning of December, Forrest Nyerberg was taken ill and was out for about six months. And during that time, we had some very serious issues with paying the city bills because we didn't have authorized signatories. That's when this structure was put together. If there is an issue here where we violate city code, we obviously need to address it, need to make sure that we're in compliance. And I would recommend that we do appoint a treasurer simply for the fact that if somebody should once again be taken ill, that we have a backup that can still continue to conduct city business. Be my suggestion.
I would agree that we need another individual, no question about that. I don't know that, city treasurer did come up, and city manager might want to address this. The other alternative that I was seeing...
The other alternative that I was seeing was another, just someone within the city appointed, not necessarily the office of treasurer, but somebody, it didn't look, and I haven't had a chance to go into it all that deeply myself, but it, it looked like very simply what we needed was one more signatory, not necessarily another office within the city. But that's, that's just my opinion.
Yeah, I mean, that's essentially what we would do is we'd just name somebody within the city as treasurer. That's, I believe, the way that the charter reads. And if I remember correctly, I'm going from memory here, so correct me if I'm wrong, but I do believe it was the city clerk, the finance director, the mayor, and the mayor pro temp that were listed in.
Sir, if I might correct that, actually what the charter says is the city clerk or treasurer is the signees for the city, and then the mayor, mayor, mayor pro temp, and other council members as a sign.
Okay.
All right. My recommendation to the council this evening is that the treasurer might be a more intricate discussion. I would recommend to the council tonight that if indeed you wish to remove the city manager, which would be consistent with the charter, that you do so as well as the finance director. And the city council did pass a resolution, yeah, thank you, back in, sorry, the 22nd of December that allowed the signature by the public works director, who is the interim city manager during that time. This follows a common practice that we've had in the city of having a city manager as a signator. So, but if you would like to be, as I said in my email last night, if you'd like to follow strict adherence to the charter, then I would recommend tonight that the signatories be the city clerk, the mayor, the mayor pro temp, and perhaps another council member. It does create an issue that, you know, you need two signatures and one needs to be from the staff side, but I think this discussion on a treasurer or something could be held for another meeting and you could simply go ahead and pass this resolution tonight with those signatories and then discuss that other issue because the treasurer is a little bit different than a line employee of the city. It actually inferred in the charter that that is a, would be an appointee of the city council rather than a line employee of the city, and that person's compensation is fixed by the council as well. So that's a different position than anything the city currently has, and I'm not sure when or if they have had a treasurer, at least not in recent memory.
There is no, from what I remember reading, there was no description of exactly what the duties of the treasurer were other than signing checks, correct?
That is essentially correct.
That might be something that we want to dig a little bit deeper into and maybe refer back to our city attorney on the legality of that as well.
So are we okay between now and next meeting?
We could keep the signatories as they are for now and just conduct business as usual until the next meeting, I do believe.
Mayor, may I address the council? The ethical concern that I have with the public works director and the city clerk being both being signers is that they are married and that poses a control issue and therefore I think it's really inappropriate to have both of them as signers. So that was my biggest concern here.
And I would like to second that because that's, that's very important. It's like the President Trump and his family all in office. It's important what you just said.
So Mr. Mayor, I would recommend that you go ahead with the signature, the signatories per the charter this evening, and then we can work out the rest of the details at a later date, but that would then create, because you are the council, the actual signatory powers, so we can continue to do business and sign checks at this point.
So I move to amend resolution number one dash two zero one eight. I would amend it to state that Anita Vance, the city clerk, Dale Becker, the mayor, and Victor Segala, mayor pro temp, be signing authorities at this point in time.
And I understand that from your objection, that solves that?
That solves my objection.
For, for now? Then I second.
Second that as well.
Counselor Segal?
Aye.
Counselor Johnson?
Aye.
Counselor Schlebach?
Aye.
Mayor Becker?
Aye.
Motion carries? And there are no ordinances, the city?
Contracts, agreements and leases, waste management contract renewal?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Counselors, my name is Tony Howard. I'm the Public Sector Solutions Manager for Waste Management. Congratulations on the new counselors and Mr. Mayor. So yes, we would, in our current contract, there is an option to extend for five years after December 31st, 2017, and we would absolutely like to extend for another five years. We asked for some change in language in the rate increase section of the contract going forward though. We would like to move to more of a notification procedure versus a request procedure, and our rationale behind this respectfully is this is a non-exclusive contract. We have competition here in the city, meaning, you know, we have costs, they have costs. Unlike an exclusive contract, residents have the option, you know, they basically can go with us or they can go with the competition. So, you know, we understand when we were the only vendor here in town, you know, that it was probably very important to make sure that, you know, costs were, were monitored, but ultimately we believe that residents have that choice to go with us or the other guy. Also, we would like to use, instead of the regular CPI, we would like to go a little bit deeper under that CPI is a water sewer trash index. We believe that's more indicative of the services that we provide here in the city. And then thirdly, we would like the previous price increase that was presented to council at the last session to be enacted for the 2018 rates going forward.
Forrest, do you have any comments on this?
Well, Mr. Mayor, you have a number of options or decisions tonight to make. One is the renewal of Waste Management's contract that is the largest issue, and that was a five-year contract and is up for renewal now. Certainly, staff would recommend that that contract is renewed. In regards to the rate increase language, that is clearly a pleasure to decide if you want to on an annual basis review requests for rate increases or if you want it to become automatic. And then third item being the rate increase that was requested by the management, which was rejected by the last city council and died for lack of a second on the motion to approve. So you have three decisions tonight, obviously the simplest one's probably the contract, the rate increase, you know, I can't say that we have delved into CPI water sewer trash indexes to see how relatable they are to Montavista itself. So, you know, I can't at this time recommend that. I think that it's something that we can look at for a future renewal or, you know, sometime throughout the year to look at if the council wants to make that language modification. As far as the rate increase itself is requested, once again, that goes to CPI and that is at the council's pleasure. You know, it's not a huge amount, I would say, you know, nobody likes rate increases. It is a competitive market because we do have another waste disposal service that works here, and customers obviously have a choice there. So that's kind of a mixed bag if the customers, you know, it's not a huge impact on the customers, but nevertheless, it is a rate increase. So once again, I guess that's kind of your decision.
Can we approve the rate increase that you requested originally without, without the water sewer trash index until we look into?
Yes, absolutely. There are really three separate issues here. One, you want to modify the contract language, which is the water sewer trash CPI piece. That's a piece of the contract language. You're not bound to approve that. You can approve the rate increase separately and the contract renewal as three separate items or in one motion on whichever you chose.
Do you have any insight on that? Joe, you were, you were the one that made the motion originally, and I appreciate that.
Yeah, essentially what I was looking at was the CPI, and what CPI is, is the consumer price index. And if you look at with, as through the eyes of an economics lens, which is my education, what you look at is what the cost is of essentially doing business. So CPI controls what we buy, plain and simple. So when we go to the grocery store, their prices at the grocery store are controlled by CPI. This is essentially what they're saying here. Now, I was made aware of a small issue where five years ago, Waste Management had been asked to take a look at potentially bringing in a recycling center. Now, that, there hasn't been any progress made on that yet despite the fact that there were some promises made towards that. So I'm not quite sure where we're at with that, and so I guess in the interest of fairness and transparency, I'd be kind of interested to hear where you're at with that. You kind of explained a little bit the last time. Could you just give us a little bit more of an update on that?
Well, in terms of the contract that we just finished the five years, there was nothing in there about bringing that, to my understanding.
That was a verbal agreement.
Okay, that was, you know, prior to me, but since I started, we've definitely been working to see, not just for this community, but for surrounding communities, how we can bring the cost down. Like I stated before, basically, the price comes down when there's more people participating in the program. So if we just have just the city of Montavista doing recycling, all their recycling has to either be, there has to be some type of MRF, Materials Recovery Facility here, or it has to be shipped down to Denver. And that's where all the costs come in because fuel and also recycling, they're commodities. And so if you don't have an end user or buyer that's purchasing this commodity, then it's just sitting on docks and there's, there's really no, basically, economic value to it. And so we've been working with our facilities around the state. I work in the whole state of Colorado, and we've been trying to clean the recycling stream and see what we can do to basically bring those costs down. So I've been not only talking in the communities close to here, but outside of here as well to see if we can get people on board because the more people we have who are interested in these programs, we can bring the cost down. And so that's where we are today. But simply just, you know, opening a facility, you know, five miles away, collecting recycling, shipping it down to Denver, recycling is going to be more than trash in terms of cost.
Appreciate that.
He's talking about trucking it from here to Denver. The cost is going to be incredible, and with the new ELV programs that are in these trucks, it will probably increase that. So like he says, it will cost more to truck it to Denver than the product's worth. And that could be as simple as saying that send my load of recyclables could cost three grand to send it to Denver and it's, doesn't have value there.
Sure. And if I may add, we're always looking at grants to try to bring recycling to smaller communities like this and, you know, pay grants and federal grants when we see them come up. So we apply for them all the time, you know, sometimes we get them, sometimes we don't. But that would be a great opportunity. I will definitely keep you guys in mind in terms of that, you know, to get some type of grant money to at least start some type of program, you know, in the future. Then also I want to say, you know, our commitment to the city is still huge. On the last contract, we paid four percent of our gross revenue, you know, for the franchise contract. In addition to that, we offer free services around the city, the parks and different city facilities. So our commitment to you stays strong.
I like your sign out on the gun drawn too. We need more signs like that around town, advertising restored 19th century western town. So it looks good coming into town.
I would.
I would mind it all. Where do we stand on that? I mean, willing to discuss combining it or we can make three separate motions, we can make two separate ones, however we want to do it. How does everybody feel about that one?
I think we could make a motion for the price increase and for the contract renewal and discuss the other index at the, at the next meeting.
I just looked at that wording and I'm not finding it right now. Right entrance here, it's section 10. So you want to make a motion to that effect?
I would. I'd move that we approve the contract renewal and the rate increase as presented at the previous meeting and set for further discussion the index that's been presented by Waste Management.
Meaning, meaning section 10 of the, of the contract?
Exactly.
Okay. I would second that.
Second that as well.
Any further discussion?
Sorry, I'll get tangled up.
Aye.
Counselor Schlebach?
Aye.
Counselor Johnson?
Aye.
Mayor Becker?
Aye.
Motion carries?
Thank you.
Thank you.
So just a little bit of history on that as well. There's no set policy on conducting RFPs for the city attorney or any other contract employee contractor or, well, there's a number of independent contractors that the city has, and what we had agreed to as previous city council, and it's up to this council whether you want to continue that or not, is that every three to five years, there would be an RFP conducted for the independent contractors due to the fact that we are spending taxpayer dollars and we want to make sure that we're completely transparent. So the last RFP for the city attorney was conducted roughly four years ago, and is it three or four years ago? Three years ago, okay. Three years ago, and so it falls right in that window to, once again, conduct an RFP should we choose to do so.
I'd certainly be in favor of submitting an RFP as long as we allow enough time for response from the city.
Well, I think we can.
I think there's probably standard time for that. Is that right, Neil?
Yes, correct.
That's correct.
So I move to instruct staff to conduct an RFP for City Attorney within the timelines of a normal RFP.
I second that. Any more discussion? Nita?
Counselor Johnson?
Aye.
Counselor Segala?
Aye.
Counselor Schleba?
Aye.
Mayor Becker?
Aye.
Motion carries?
So, RFP for the cleaning company for the city buildings? Same situation?
Well, I'm not quite sure, actually, what that one is, but I'm assuming.
That RFP for the cleaning, the last time it was done was in 2014. And being that it's the first meeting of the year, we felt that it was appropriate to have that RFP as well.
That's the case. I instruct staff to conduct an RFP for the cleaning company for the city buildings within the normal timeline.
And I second that. Any more discussion on that, guys? Nita?
Counselor Johnson?
Aye.
Counselor Segala?
Aye.
Counselor Schleba?
Aye.
Mayor Becker?
Aye.
Motion carries?
IGA between the city of Montevista and Rio Grande County Sheriff. Any governmental...
So, I started back in February of last year. And one of the first things I did was update the IGA with the Rio Grande County Sheriff's Department. That was redone. Myself, Chief Lopez, Officer Pino, David Pino, we met with the jailers and with Sheriff Norton. And going back and forth, we created the IGA for the Rio Grande County Sheriff's Department to detain our defendants. And I spoke with Sheriff Norton, and he feels comfortable with the way that the IGA is read currently. The only change that may come down the line would be the increase of imprisonment on a daily basis. That has not come down from the state level yet, and that would be the only increase at the jail. But other than that, everything has remained the same in the IGA. And we just ask that you approve that IGA this evening.
Chief, where do you stand on that?
Good evening, there, counselors. Honestly, I think there's some things that needs to be worked out, especially when it comes to medical clearances. They're much simpler in the reading, and much more difficult on an application. The definition of who needs to be cleared, where that money comes from, how an inmate at the time can either be denied or not, there's a lot of complications with that. It's kind of taken on a life of its own, that I really kind of just got involved with. So I think that's the biggest thing that I would, if it doesn't cause too many problems, I would table that, but I think it's something that could always be adjusted throughout the year. So I really don't have a huge problem with it as it reads. I know there's one thing that really has to be worked out. I don't think leverage of not approving it as it is is important, other than just we need to continue to work towards having more streamlined, more effective. We're putting the hospitals in a really weird predicament, because they have no authority to touch you if you say, "Don't touch me, don't look at me, don't analyze me." What's the point? However, the jail has that authority if they had a nurse. And under circumstances, I understand that some sort of hospital stay might be more appropriate. But we're talking basic clearances, people who typically really have nothing wrong with them. There's some exceptions to that, you know. We have to use force, that's different. We, you know, we actually end up really seriously hurting somebody, that makes total sense, and they would be under our care until they're capable of going, you know, to jail. Obvious medical conditions that maybe just so happen to have when we try to contact you and arrest you. So those kind of sort of dances are spelled out, but that's not exactly happening. So that's my stance, but that doesn't change that we could approve it. I just wanted you guys kind of aware that that's going on, and probably should be addressed eventually.
Do you have any type of timeframe that you would anticipate this getting worked out?
I have a couple of meetings scheduled with the sheriff, for several reasons. That's one of them. And the biggest impetus for that is coming from the hospital. They're getting put in a really weird position. It's expected that if we drag in an inmate or someone in custody, they're under our control, and they can have to do what we say. That's true. Has nothing to do with what the hospital is able to do to them. So there, it's a little tricky. And Alan Wilson's kind of worked through it already, so we kind of have a big brother to look to. So hopefully, we can get on the same page with him and Rio Grande.
Thank you.
It sounds like we definitely need some discussion and some more information before approving.
If you'd like, Chief Rosecrenz, myself, we can get together on the current end, City Attorney, and make sure that we have everything in place.
This will not prohibit us from continuing to incarcerate defendants up until we approve it?
Mr. Mayor, you need a motion to table?
I move that we table the request for the IGA approval, City of Montevista, for Rio Grande County, and regarding the Rio Grande Jail.
Second.
And do you have a second, Nita?
Counselor Segala?
Aye.
Counselor Schleba?
Aye.
Counselor Johnson?
Aye.
Mayor Becker?
Aye.
Motion carries?
Contract agreement between the city of Montevista and Connor Animal Shelter? Oh, I'm sorry. Skip that one. Jail notification agreement?
Mayor, that is just in your packet for your information. That was sent, Judge Zollers has issued a standing order for the jails, and that letter is just representing that standing order that was sent out to the jails, and it's in your packet, just for your information.
So this is regarding the new legislation that went into effect?
That is correct.
As of the first?
That is correct.
I read through that, and I didn't understand any of it, so I'll talk to you later.
Contract to the city of Montevista and Connor Animal Shelter?
Again, this is just a yearly contract that needs to be signed. I did contact Connor Animal Shelter, I did not hear back from them, so I don't know what the pleasure the board would be is to either move forward with them signing the contract, or waiting until we hear back from Connor Animal Shelter. Forrest, do you have any input on that?
It might be prudent to see if they have any recommended changes. Now, generally, it is actually required under your rules of procedure for this first meeting, these things happen. However, you can once again table this, and invite them to, if they have any contract notifications they would like to seek, to appear at the next council meeting, bring this off the table and have a discussion with them prior to approval.
Just a quick question. I remember having a discussion about a rate increase last year. We gave them that rate increase, correct?
Yes, sir, you did.
Yeah, that's what I thought. And just something that I like to look at is, when we do work with outside entities like this, I do like to have them at least appear in front of us once a year, give an accounting of how our money's being spent. That's been a bit difficult to obtain from the Connor Animal Shelter. Now, they do provide a tremendous service. I don't think we could continue to function without it. So I'm a bit torn right here as to exactly how we would proceed, due to the fact that I think it would be pertinent for them to give an accounting of how our dollars are being spent.
I actually, I do get a monthly report from them. I had requested it when we did the new agreement. And so I do get a monthly report of how many animals they have in there, or how many days. I do review it every month. So if anybody would like me to share that with you, if you want me to send those to you, I can do that.
That'd be great. It's still pretty good if somebody could come in and talk to us. I agree.
Yeah, yeah. I read through that, and I had some questions about even the basic structure, the way that it's set up. I'm sure I just need to be lessened on that. But it, I think there was just a substantial flat fee for all of their services. We've seen interesting. So, but yeah, that would solve that issue. So I don't know, do we need another motion to table it?
Yes.
I would motion to table that. Contract agreement between the city of Montevista and the Connor Animal Shelter, two are next.
Second.
Any more discussion?
Counselor Johnson?
Aye.
Counselor Schleba?
Aye.
Counselor Segala?
Aye.
Mayor Becker?
Aye.
Motion carries?
Motion carries, we'll put that off to the next meeting. Hopefully, somebody can come in.
I'll continue to try to get a hold of them and have those come in.
Lease agreement for partial land between the city of Montevista and Bill Miller?
So on the lease agreement, and the next item on the agenda is the water, the lease of water rights. These are just yearly lease agreements that the city has with these individuals. Council does not have to approve them. This is information for you guys. If you had any questions, Forrest, myself, or Rob Vance can answer these as well. And these are just yearly contracts that the city signs with these two individuals. And I just wanted to present them to you as information. And then if you had any questions.
I did have one question, probably just clerical, but for City Manager, the lease agreement with Bill Miller was, what I read, was dated May, I think it was, or sometime last year?
Yes, sir. So on this one, actually, the term of lease carries into 2019, and so it is an informational item. But it is provided so you're aware that we have that lease, and at some point, commencing at the end of this year, be it for the council to decide if you want to issue an RFP, or notification for bids, to release that two-week lease, that parcel, in May of 2019. And this is the parcel over by the bank? Yes, sir, kind of to the south of it.
It's used for raising, is it?
Yes. Are you guys standing questions? Payment for interim municipal judge? Have you got anything on that?
No, sir, just the memo that I attached to that invoice that's in your packet.
Just for public knowledge on that one, what we had agreed to was to hire Judge Zollers to come in and conduct a review of the practices that had been happening in our court, and to examine how we should proceed. And we had agreed on $5,000, which is what we see here, plus another $320 on top of that for the conducting court. It's probably a little bit, slightly more for conducting court, slightly less for doing the review, but essentially shakes out to that.
One note on that, that she did give us a discount.
$1,000.
And we have to, we need a vote to approve that?
Yes, sir.
I move that we approve the payment to the interim municipal judge for the review that she performed.
Second.
Second. Any more discussion? Nita?
Counselor Segala?
Aye.
Counselor Schleba?
Aye.
Counselor Johnson?
Aye.
Mayor Becker?
Aye.
Motion carries?
Financial, receive and approve, any financial reports?
Good evening. Congratulations. Vice Mayor, some of you have met the board. So I just, you know, I just have a couple of financial highlights. The main one being in the general fund. As you'll notice in your report here, for the last three fiscal years, prior to 2017, we had deficits in the general fund every single year. Prior to that, we had actually had surpluses for many years. But the effect of those three deficits was to decrease the fund balance in the general fund by 44%, or $368,000, to a pretty unhealthy level. But I'm happy to report that this year, due to revising some budget items, putting a moratorium on some capital outlays, stuff like that, as it stands right now, we're looking at about a $97,000 surplus. That could change based on year-end adjustments that I, you know, that accountant would typically make. One concern I have right now is with Kids Connection, we might have to do a transfer to cover operations. However, I've contacted Bob Briening with the Montevista Community Funds. He's working on trying to see if he could get us some money to cover that. So, but that would be an example of an item that would decrease that surplus that we're looking at. But overall, I believe we will still end up with a surplus despite that. December books are not closed yet, so these figures are based off of everything, based off of financial information through November. Another item that's significant is, at the end of 2016, our main operating cash balance in the general fund was at $28,000. That's what we operate off of, pay payroll, pay, you know, any kind of vendors, so that was extremely unhealthy level. And in fact, at the end of February of 2017, we had a negative $2,000 cash balance. And we have pulled cash, so that doesn't mean our bank account was overdrawn, but it does mean that the allocation to the general fund, the general fund actually had a negative balance. However, as of the end of November, we're up to $226,000, and that is actually a 701% increase from the end of 2016. So, I mean, our goal for sure is to continue that growth. Ideally, we'd like about three months' worth of expenses in the cash account at a minimum, so maybe $750,000 in our main operating account. But I think we've, you know, made some pretty good strides to get there, and so I'm hoping that'll continue. Revenues in the general fund are pretty stagnant. I mean, year-over-year, they hover around $3 million. And, you know, there will be a little bit of fluctuation, depending on if we get any grants, or how much the grants are. Taxes are pretty stable, well stagnant, in terms of growth. In fact, with the sales taxes here, I'm actually thinking they might decrease a little bit from last year. Not significantly, but I was hoping they'd increase a little bit, and that didn't happen. I don't think that's going to happen. But what you'll see is, we probably have about $3.15 million at the end of 2017, as opposed to 3.27 in 2016. In 2018, is a prediction of about $2.89 million. And the drop in that is due to a pass-through grant that we had, so we were receiving grant money for another entity, so it was coming in and going right back out. so it was coming in and going right back out. So it's not technically a decrease in revenue for the city per se, since we, that we were not entitled to those funds. Expenditures, including transfers, at the end of the year, expected to be about 3.05 million. And that's where we're resulting in a surplus of the $97,000. And as I state, your actual results may differ once I've completed year-end adjustments, but the city should maintain a surplus. So, that's some happy news. As I stated, I put Kids Connection in here. Our revenues in Kids Connection really depend heavily on contributions, donations. I know we attempt to get grants, but it's hard because we're a governmental agency. So, a lot of these type of, the type of grants that would go to Kids Connection, most of these organizations would rather send it to a nonprofit. They're not so, so that's a struggle that we have with grants with Kids Connection. Monovista Community Fund has done an outstanding job of raising funds. But in light of the fact that we might have some changes over there, and we're just unsure of how much, how much we're going to be getting from them, we did budget, I believe it was, yeah, $78,000 from the general fund to subsidize the Kids Connection fund for 2018, so that we could ensure that the program could still run effectively for the year. So as of right now, I know community funds has $25,000 earmarked for Kids Connection, which we will definitely receive. There's an additional $20,500 that, that's what Bob is trying to come up with at this point. If he, if he can't, then that's what the general fund will have to subsidize. The water fund, our total revenues is $1.02 million for the fiscal year 2017, as opposed to approximately $873,000 in 2016. The large increase is significantly related to an increase in water service charges due to the rate increases that occurred near the end of 2016. So that's what the main source of the increase there was. The expenses are projected to be approximately $952,000 for fiscal year 17. This will result in approximately a $65,000 surplus at the end of the year. The main operating cash balance increased from $705,819 to $898,973 as of November 2017, which is a 27% increase from 2016. The sewer funds' total revenues are projected to be approximately $1.99 million for fiscal year ending December 2017, as opposed to approximately $1.66 million in 2016. Again, this is largely due to the rate increases that occurred at the end of 2016. So 17 saw those revenues coming in the entire year. Expenses are projected to be about $1.56 million, and that will leave us with a $74,000 surplus. Now, we did budget a deficit in the, in the fund this year, and that's kind of a timing issue because we received some proceeds, loan proceeds, stuff like that, for our big sewer project that we have going on. But I think we just, some of the work, I mean, we're still working on it, so this might be pushed, it's actually going to be pushed in to 2018, which is why we have the budgeted deficit in 2018. The operating cash in the sewer fund at the end of 2016 was a negative $456,911 at December 31st, 2016. And it is now, as of November 30th, a positive $235,000, and that's a 151% increase in that fund. Capital Improvement Fund, this is where we, this fund is where we record the 1% tax that's for capital improvements and projects. And it actually goes, a large portion of it goes to paying off the bonds that we use to fund our road projects, I believe, several years ago. And so, the total revenues are projected to be approximately $360,000. And like I said, that's the same with the general fund. It's a tax revenue, it's pretty stagnant. And in fact, I think it's going to be slightly lower than it was last year. The total expenditures are projected to be approximately $471,000, which will result in an estimated $111,000 Something to note here, and we've had discussions with the, you know, previous council and Joe, a significant portion of the Capital Improvement Fund expenditures relate to debt service for the city's 2008 refunding bonds, as well as several capital leases for equipment and vehicles. This fund will be over-expended year-over-year due to several long-term lease obligations entered into that do not begin to expire until fiscal, fiscal year 2020. Can't really do anything about that. But, you know, as I told the previous, or we discussed with the previous council, that I would not recommend getting into any more capital leases for quite a while, because we just can't afford them. I'm not sure if you want me to go over the November numbers, since I just kind of did a year-end review highlight. But you have those in your packet. So if any of you, do any of you have any questions on any of this information that I just provided?
I do not.
No? As I stated earlier in this meeting, and I really do apologize that I have brought this to council on your first meeting. But I've been struggling with this stuff for a long time, and I, our auditors were in our office in December. And, you know, I discussed my concerns with him, and as a fellow CPA, you know, I kind of wanted to get what his thoughts were as well. And, you know, he completely agreed with me. And basically, you know, as a CPA, I have an obligation to address issues that I feel are either putting the city's and the taxpayers' funds at risk, and anything I feel is unethical. I'm not going to discuss everything that I want to, because as I stated, some of this is sensitive information regarding personnel, myself included. So, I'm going to touch on a few things, and then I would really, really appreciate a strong consideration of my request for an executive session after you get legal advice and, and all that, that type of stuff. This is really difficult for me, because I'm not going to be very popular, but that's not my job. So, one concern that I have is the use of city shop by city employees after hours for personal, to, to work on their vehicles.
City shop?
Yes. One of the biggest concerns I have there is it's a liability issue. If someone was to get hurt, if they have people that are not city employees, I don't think the city would be covered. We could be sued. There's just major liability issue there. We don't know what they're doing in there. I don't think there's supervision. And I'm, to be honest with you, I don't know to the extent of how much it's being used. I just know that it is. I have been told this by executive members of the city. So this has been confirmed to me. Another concern I have is the use of consumables. I mean, we purchase things like, you know, fluids for vehicles, and, and, you know, parts for vehicles, stuff like that. And I just don't know how we have any way of knowing that those are not being used inappropriately for personal vehicles. And that's unethical. I, I mean, I find it hard to believe that people are not using that stuff. Also, we're paying for electricity in a big shop to be used after hours for not city business. The other thing is, is I'm not sure what kind of equipment is in there, but if they are also using equipment that is electrical, or, you know, runs on, well, any kind of mechanical equipment, then we're, you know, then they're using the life of the equipment. Things could get broken. I mean, expensive things. So, I mean, these are just, you know, it's a concern, and I don't think it's really ethical that taxpayer dollars are used for the benefit of, you know, a handful of people in the city of Monovista, some who might not even be citizens. So, that's one. And another one, and I have addressed this, and I was kind of blown off, is I have heard that we buy tools for the city mechanic to, to keep. Now, I'm not sure why the city would pay for these tools and give them to the mechanic, but I have asked that question, and what I was told was, it is a longstanding policy that wasn't quite understood. That was the answer I got, and it was dropped. Another one I have is personal use of city-owned vehicles. We, several employees are provided with city-owned vehicles in which they commute back and forth to work. We pay for the gas for that. The vehicles depreciate, and I know for a fact that one employee does not even live in Monovista. So we are paying for him to drive back and forth to his home. And I actually found in the municipal code where it explicitly states that under no circumstances are employees supposed to be provided with vehicles that they commute to and from work. So, that's, you know. The next one I have is more of, well, I mean, see, I'm not going to be popular at all. So, something I find fiscally irresponsible is, we pay time and a half for on-call. I have spoken and received the policies of other municipalities around here, and I have not seen anyone yet that pays time and a half. I don't know why we're paying overtime rates for people to be on-call. I mean, that's, you know, that's, for me, that's just expensive and unnecessary. Now, straight time, I think, is appropriate, but time and a half, I don't understand that. Because as far as I've seen, for, you know, the 10 months that I've been here, I don't even think any, I mean, that I know of, people have not been called out. I'm sure it happens, but, I mean, we're basically paying time and a half overtime for, for people to be sitting at home. So, and I've addressed this, but, you know.
I'm sorry, could you clarify that point? We're paying, the time and a half doesn't start when the call starts. It's, they're on time and a half the entire week.
Well, no. So it's one hour per weekday, and four hours we pay every Saturday and Sunday, no matter what.
Okay, thanks.
This one I will skip and hope to talk to you in an executive session. The other problem we are having is following policies. We seem to have policies, and when someone complains, we change it. And then we change it back if someone else complains. And, you know, it's, it's very time-consuming for myself and our HR coordinator, who does our payroll. I review the payroll. There's all kinds of policies regarding payroll that we just can't seem to have a policy, stick to it, and, and put our foot, you know, put our feet down. We try, but, but it doesn't, but if anyone complains, it just, it just kind of gets thrown out the window. And it makes it very confusing for payroll, and a lot of errors happen because we're told one thing, and the next day it's another thing, and the next day it's another thing. So, I mean, there's just too much wavering going on. It's costly to us. I just, you know, that's a problem. I won't name names, but I will throw this out there. We have some salaried employees who appear to take advantage and abuse their position as a salaried employee because they are not working 40 hours a week, and yet we are paying them 40 hours a week. And these employees are also not using vacation or sick time all of the time that they're doing this. And it's frequent, and it's consistent. We have some issues with nepotism, which I would like to discuss in an executive session as well, just because it has to do with personnel. But I believe it goes against our policy, and it has posed some morale issues around the entire city. And so, that, that, that needs to be addressed. In terms of discipline and accountability, it seems, or appears, that certain people are held to a certain standard and others are not. And people will be, actually, there's not a whole lot of discipline that occurs around here. And it seems like maybe the people That's also something else I'd like to discuss in an executive session, because it's hard, I can't give specifics. Or does that need to be in an executive session?
Sounds to me like executive session.
And it's not necessarily his salary, it's, it's other things.
I can advise you on that, what you're legally entitled to do. I mean, you can pretty much say whatever you want, as far as...
Okay.
And if you want to talk to me about it, I don't have time.
Well, I would just like this process expedited. I know it's been difficult to, for some reason, get in touch with you. So, I'm just wondering if I could get some kind of finality, or some kind of, you know, something in the very, very near future where these things can be discussed?
You want to contact me?
No, I mean, I, I know that my attorney has attempted to contact you several times.
Actually, he has not, but that's okay.
He actually has, and, and I'm not going to argue with you about that. But I guess for now, that's all I'm going to say. I really, really would hope that you guys take this seriously, and make it a priority, and make it a priority for the city attorney to address this as soon as possible. And I really do apologize for throwing this out there on your first meeting, but I've been sitting on this stuff for a while, and I was waiting to talk to my auditor, just to get some professional and peer, you know, I guess, to get his, his opinion as well. And he had the same opinion as me. So, this is where I'm at.
Thank you for your report, Heather.
Thank you.
Would it be, could you get the information from her on her attorney?
She has it.
To make the contact?
I just have it.
I have been in touch with her and her mayor. Not about any of these issues, so not been brought to my attention.
So, that was approved through the consent agenda?
So, we just move on to staff reports, staff proposals, reports and actions? City manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council, welcome board. Well, I'll start with my report, but I will make one statement in rebuttal to what Ms. Hickson just said. If the auditors had concerns about our finances or operations, it was her responsibility as a director of mine to report those to me. I asked her how things went with the auditor and she indicated everything was fine. So, while some of these things she raised are valid concerns and do have to do with some of the longstanding policies and practices of the city, she did fail in her job to properly inform those of me, to me, and again, has violated chain command in reporting this without discussing with me before that. Under the city charter, it is my responsibility to report the financial condition of the city to the council, not the finance directors. That is the difference between the treasurer and a finance director, one which apparently is lost on this employee. That's all I'm going to say on that for now. To my report, you know, most of this is a year-end summary, but one idea I did want to bring to you, which I did discuss with the mayor prior, was that the SLB Development Resource Group owns a property at 234 Adam Street in the city and it's currently vacant. It is something, they've been trying to sell this property, I believe it's sale-ready, but they also offered us an opportunity if we want to participate with them in a kind of, you'd call it incubator program. It's modeled on a, another program where essentially create a contest for business startups and the business startup that wins the contest gets an opportunity to have that space rent-free for a year. So, you still pay utilities and that kind of stuff, but they wouldn't pay rent to the owners, which is SLB DRG. Personally, I think it's a great idea. You know, one concern that I'd raise is like, well, if you own a vacant storefront here is the city competing against you. I, I think there's two ways to deal with that. One is that it's a one-year only. And in a perfect world, we would actually get with people that had available business properties and kind of create a consortium with them so as this business grows in that space and their year comes to an end, we could actually connect them with people that own these other vacant business spaces and see if they could, you know, arrange to lease those from them. I mean, obviously, if the business is thriving, that's an opportunity, another opportunity to fill a vacant space. So, I'm just bringing this to council to see if you're interested in staff pursuing that idea. I don't know if you all have any thoughts on that.
I read through that and I kind of shared your concern about whether that would alienate other business owners. And I don't, I don't know that it would. I know business owners right now in town that are offering those kind of incentives and that's not an affront to, to anybody. I don't know, I could be wrong, but I sure, I certainly like the idea just, just from the standpoint of being able to do something with a vacant building. So, I don't know all of the ramifications of that, but on the surface, it sounds very funny.
You know, if, if the council wished, we could actually have that for a discussion item on the next council agenda and reach out maybe through the chamber to business owners and see if any of them want to provide written comments or come to the council meeting and, and kind of have their say on, on what they think the idea. I think we could work it into a workable thing, but clearly, that's at your pleasure.
Couple of points that I'd be interested in with this is, one, as I've always said, I'm big on collaboration. When resources are scarce, we, when we pull our resources, we get more out of them. And so, what I'd like to see is maybe reaching out to the vacant building owners, seeing if they'd be willing to participate in some type of a program. Some might not, some might, you know, it's at their pleasure, however, they want to do it. But I think it'd be really interesting to see how we, if we can create some kind of synergy there that we can boost things forward a little bit. And then the other piece is talk with the local business owners. We have been doing a coffee with, kind of sort of did a coffee with council, and it's kind of not happened again. That's something that I'd like to continue seeing to happen, is doing these meetings, having some collaborative discussions with, with the business owners and seeing if we can't figure out, you know, we've done some really great trainings, those have been awesome, but maybe it's time now to talk to the, to the local business owners and go, hey, with those trainings, what are some ideas that you now have that the city could work with you on? So, and I think we've made some really good steps and I think this would be a very logical second step.
Okay, so we'll work on that if it's council's pleasure. Perhaps we should schedule the citing, item for the first meeting in February and then give staff some time to do groundwork with the local businesses, give that out there and probably contact the chamber and see if we could work up some interest and, you know, comments on this program, but also maybe some, some further participants perhaps.
Sure.
Okay, we'll work on that. Strategic planning session, just as a recommendation to the council, I believe I shared this in email that once you have, you know, filled the vacant seat, that it would be a useful task for staff to interact with council and actually create a strategic plan for the next four years and then wrench it back to a one-year period with measurable deliverables that have assigned parties to do them and that way we could actually gauge our progress against those goals. As far as year-end review goes, you all have my report. I don't know if you have any particular questions on things that are within that. At your next council meeting, the water attorneys will be present to make a presentation on the current status of our order, the objection we filed to the water regulations, which have been wholly satisfied, and also where our augmentation plan lies, so that you all can kind of get briefed up on that. You are sitting in the city's future emergency command center. That was a great partnership effort that we did where the generator was restored to working function and we partnered with Viero, who's providing cell phones for police officers, and there's a mini-tower here. So, in case of an actual disaster where power is out, our generator would also fire the cell tower, which would then allow our police department to use cell phones as a backup in case, you know, there was a large enough outage that CSP dispatch didn't work. That's a real long shot, but that's the point of having an emergency command center. We'll also be drafting an emergency management plan for the city this spring that'll tie into the use of this building as an emergency center. Obviously, we can't do everything in an emergency. We also have the Sky High complex, but those will all be taken care of in that plan. The city did partner with Proximity Mall to provide wastewater treatment. As you know, that is an economic development success for our community. It's 25 well-paying jobs out there and they're currently delivering wastewater to our veterans' wastewater treatment plant. As well, we've partnered with Rio Grande County, who has obtained a grant to do a study, for their engineering study of the veterans' wastewater plant. The city's contribution to that study is $1,000. The total cost of it, of the program's about $50,000. We did participate in the bid process, it has been awarded by the county, and the idea is to, to look at the design of the veterans' plant and update that so it has a potential to run 24/7, 365, which currently it doesn't. It freezes in the winter, we don't generally run it in the winter, and there is a way to take Proximity Mall discharge and hold it over the winter and process it in the summer. But this would certainly create other opportunities, both for future industrial users and for additional wastewater service for the city. You know, we're facing a lot of EPA federal regulations that are been promulgated through the state regarding our discharge and we need to do everything we can to avoid having to replace our Henderson lagoons. That's a very expensive process and we think that we can, through this study, find a much less expensive way to achieve that goal. We did have boutique air at our airport for about a month and a couple of weeks before that while I worked on the helmet report, actually went really well. You know, Art Jones, who's actually runs the airport out there, and everything was coordinated nicely. There was still crop spraying going on and we didn't have any particular issues. Public Works Crew did a nice job kind of semi-rejuvenating our terminal. It's a small terminal, it's got some really classy stuff from the 50s and such, but it worked well. We did hire new police chief, as you're all aware of. We were able to replace our Best and Brightest Intern, that's a program that's partially funded by the state and allows us to have a full-time employee who's a college student and master's program, and the one we had kind of changed his majors in midstream and through our strong relationship with DOLA, we were able to reinstitute the program and hire Azarrel Madrigal, who is an ASU grad student into that position through the rest of this year. We are working on the Montevista URA program. We do have a grant from DOLA, CDBG grant, for over $600,000 to do demolition, acquisition, rehab, sale program. And it's been a long road to get through all the regulatory tape with the state, but we actually got a, another draft of the policies, procedures manual that I got today and actually, I think we're finally on the same page with them. We're going to review that, get it back to them. Also, at the next meeting, one of the things contemplated on this program, and we'll go into it in more depth the next meeting, is that in order to make this program work, URA, which is of course only quasi-governmental organization, needed to have some cash flow. Because under this program, essentially, everything that's reimbursable is reimbursable. There's no upfront cash from the state on it. So, we've been negotiating with San Luis Valley Federal Bank for a line of credit for the MURA, which is, would be the URA's debt, not the city's. But the URA, as I discussed with previous council, would probably need the assignment of one of the city's buildings, one of our vacant buildings, no doubt, on a temporary basis, deed to them with a reverter clause when the program is over. So, we'll bring that more fully to you at the next meeting. We were able to save a significant amount in healthcare this year by changing the way that we are structured. We actually switched to a different carrier and we used basically an unbundled plan. Instead of one size fits all, you get certain things for a certain cost, we actually had a broker shop the elements of it. We have Maritain Health, which is a good system, and we saved the city about $50,000 by making that switch. We were also able to achieve one of my personal goals, which was to get our healthcare on the same renewal cycle as our fiscal year. It's been mid-year and, as you know, healthcare costs go up every year and it's been difficult to decide how much to budget for those increases because they're in July and we've never known. Now, those increases, we'll, we'll know what they're at, what they're going to be prior to doing our city budgeting. So, I was pretty happy about that. A lot of the things that we've been working on and I won't really go into them unless you have any questions.
I just have one comment on the Best and Brightest internship. We had hired Azarrel Madrigal as a half-time position and she'd been doing some really great things for the city, a lot of good economic development programs that she'd been putting together. And then when we had the opportunity to partner with DOLA, she became full-time at no additional cost to the city. And that was some pretty good news for us, so.
Yeah, and she's doing some really good work on the URA program. She will be doing the emergency management plan, that's actually part of her curriculum for college. So, and she does a whole lot of other things. She was very involved in the Winter Festival and a lot of other things. So, she's, she's a great hand. She will actually, one of the things that we'll be doing this year is creating a public information officer so that all things which are disseminated on Facebook, our website, et cetera, all go through one person, so that they're properly posted and also they'll be reviewed by the city manager at the same time, so that we have consistent messaging and then we make sure that we hit all of our various outlets for that information. So, starting actually next week, we'll have a discussion with the management team and we'll be implementing that. So, that's all I have. Thank you.
Good evening. Nice to see you all. I went ahead and prepared a memo, a confidential memo. A lot of what I have done over the last year for year-end review is confidential. I want to bring you up to speed. Joe obviously knows because he was on council last year, so what I'm going to do is send it to your inboxes later this evening and invite any questions that we need to discuss. But now that you're on council, you're protected by the attorney-client privilege, so. And after that, we can discuss any questions you may have.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Sounds good.
Good evening again. So, in my report, you'll notice it's, it's pretty lean of what was done in 2017 and not, didn't do a lot, I just really didn't know a lot what was happening around here because I wasn't here and I tried to get some information from the officers, but even some of them weren't around here. So, it's been a little bit lean in that respect, but I know as far as events, you can see we're involved in a lot. The statistics speak for themselves and I'll talk a little bit about the two reports that are attached. The calls for service, I think for a 14-man department, including the chief of police, 16,000 calls for service is pretty impressive. That's a little bit exaggerated in some areas because of the way they do their record-keeping because there's proactive and reactive calls for service in there. However, I think that's kind of good to know. Some, about 8,000 of those contacts or calls for service were initiated by the officers. So, it is good to know that they're not, you know, just completely wall-to-wall on calls that they're reactive. There's a whole lot of proactive stuff going on there as well, nearly 50%. So, it's a good for us to have a little extra time to do things. However, being 24/7, there's a minimal amount of people that can kind of maintain staffing. Having said that, nationwide, and the statistics are very readily available, 10% is kind of the minimum for being down in bodies in a police department. As high as 18 is kind of an average, so 10 to 18%. For us, that's one to two bodies and we match that. We're almost always down one to two bodies. If you count Code, we're down two bodies right now. We're down one body on patrol, not even higher, it doesn't even exist. We have one that's fully engulfed in training, so it doesn't really exist either. He has to be with an officer all the time. So, we're actually high on that average right now. We're three bodies down with 15 plus, so a little bit rough. There'll be more to talk about that throughout the year, but that's part of kind of some of my things I'd like to do in '18 is kind of talk about positions and a plan and some sort of thoughts on how to take care of that. But statistics also for '17, you see reports taken, just over 1,200 reports, 1,450 citations and 671 arrests. Those are custodial, criminal custodial arrests, not just, I didn't even include in there because we're having a little trouble with our RMS system, our records management system, for only detox and only medical mandatory holds. So, those aren't near as high as that, but that number would be closer to 1,000 from what I can tell. what I can tell, for full-in custodies. So there, there's quite a few of those as well. So having said that, if you go to your reports that are attached, I think this is, it's significant, because this is something that I truly believe that our measure of success is based on the lack of crime and disorder. I think we have crime and disorder, so I think there's some lack of success from the police department. However, our incident review, our incident activity report is mostly blank. Our RMS system isn't, is there, our records management system. It's good, however, we received almost no training. I'm not sure how that happened, but I think both of my sergeants said, and they were here, they received two hours of training on a system that's very complex. I've spent, I don't even know, probably four or five full days' worth, not at that time, but here and there, trying to figure out how the thing works with Irene, my main records supervisor's help, and she knows it better than anybody, and we're really struggling. And you can see the number of blanks on that report. So we have taken the report, but we haven't properly cleared it. We haven't properly shown whether we arrested, it was unfounded, how it was dealt with. Our statistics are very hard to find. And if you compare our burglaries, just for example, with our calls for service, there was over 100 and, I believe, 120 burglaries reported. We only took 60 reports. That's normal. You get false reporting, you get maybe a burglary in progress that happened to be a cat on the roof, you know what I mean? There's all kinds of those calls that makes sense. However, if you go to our burglary reports, that we actually took, very few were filled in where we know what happened. It shows that we had 60 burglaries, where any clear, did anything happen? And I can tell you, yesterday, with the help of Judge Zollers, we took down one at the very same time county took down one, the other side of the city. So, I mean, there's things going on that obviously we need to do better at reporting, so that the citizens know that, we feel good about it, and so it's happening. So there's a perfect example of what's kind of going on that's really hard for me to lead by, and I need some, some time to figure it out. And I think you guys just need to know about it. I've talked to Forrest about it at length. We missed our boat with the records management system. We could pay to bring in instructors, just like we did with the policy and procedure manual. There was training included, and it had an expiration date. Guess what? It's expired in both cases. Our policy manual through Lexipol and our records management system through E-Force. Both are expired. So we have a great task of trying to figure that out, or showing up the money. You heard where the money's at. A good portion of that return this year is coming from the police department, unused salaries. The guys worked really short, worked really hard this year, and there'll be a significant chunk returned there. And again, we'll talk more about that. So those are the things I wanted to hit on. I think everything else is, is kind of there, and, and most everybody kind of knows what's been going on. But again, my goals are to reduce crime, revitalize neighborhood watch, get more involved as a chief specifically. I think you're seeing that happening. And I think at the same time, look at some of the things, I have to give Heather credit. There's a few things in my department that I was shocked that we were doing. A lot of those have already ceased. A few of those I still need a little time to address. So there was some waste, there's no question. I can't speak to the others, but I can tell that I'm, I'm keeping a pretty close eye on what my guys are doing. There are two take-home cars right now. They're in the city. I think that's a benefit. I need you to know that. So if you don't like that, we can address that. That's been addressed. And I would extend that maybe a mile, maybe two miles, just as we're talking about neighborhood watch and rural watch. I think that's reasonable, but I would take direction on that. I do like having the cars out there and about. They don't leave them loaded, they unload them, they're parked under streetlights, they're not in garages, they're out on the street, they're visible. Some citizens will know what's up, some won't. Hopefully, the ones that don't will slow down or not mess around in that area, because there's a cop car parked there. So that's my goal there. I do think we need some, some things in the police department for morale, especially some maybe cleaning and maintenance and those kind of things. I am, we're going to deal right now with the city side. That kind of sounds weird probably, but there's some budgeting, budgeted items for the city and computers that we might make some trades, so that I can put computers in the cars. I don't want, everybody has their own computer right now and their own desk. We're not, we're not office clerks. We're cops. Our office is our, is our car and in contact with the citizens. So I'm going to make some changes there. Hopefully, that will, again, put some money where I think it probably should be. We're going to maintain our certifications, maintain our training, continue to do what we, what we started in the last three months. And then right at the bottom, the last couple, three bullet points are really important to me, because I think social media, and I had a different outlook, literally just a few months ago, on how this can work. But I went to some training. City manager let me go to Denver and train with the FBI on some social media concepts, and how important it is for the police department to be heard. We're the third most trusted organization in the country, above the church and above the, the paper, quite a bit above. I think that would be crazy for us not to take advantage of it. However, with that power comes a tremendous responsibility and some training. So I need to be careful with that, but I think it's an amazing tool that we have access to with Twitter and Instagram and Facebook. And I don't even know exactly what all those terms mean, but I'm willing to learn, and I have some young guys that know more than me. And then there's the traditional Rotary, Kiwanis, the fire department, how we relate with them, and how we, you know, get along with the ambulance crew, and how we support each other, the DA's, the local, how we can combine for SWAT teams or whatever we choose to do. There's a task force being formed right now for burglary reduction, and those kind of things. And that's, that's the entire district-wide from the DA herself, which is pretty cool. And then just some little events that I think we, we missed out on in '17. One was National Night Out. There was a food drive that was already in place. We just kind of missed out on it. And some active shooter training, and some bank robbery training that I think's really, really lacking that we're going to work on. So that's that in a nutshell. Any questions on anything that I didn't specifically address?
I don't have any. I think you're doing a good job being out there.
Thanks.
I'd just like to say that I've, I mean, I think it's very apt to say that you hit the ground running, and it's, we've seen a difference, just, I mean, me just driving down the street, I've seen a difference, so I appreciate that.
Thank you.
I'll say to the community out here that I've seen changes within the community because of the chief, like you said. Joe said he hit the ground running. And us as a community need to be involved with him. I know it's easy for me to say, because I haven't been afraid to open my mouth or be visible where I probably shouldn't be, but please don't be afraid as a community. Make that little phone call. Just drop a button. The chief's here. Might take him a little time, but he will take care of it. I can guarantee you that.
Well, echo that. I guess a plug for two things. Coffee with a Cop, first Wednesday of every month, and then the big Neighborhood Watch meeting the 22nd of January. So pass, spread the word.
Thank you.
Thank you, chief.
Thank you very much. How are you?
Good. I'm moving now, finally. In your packet, you have my report. Kind of divided it up in two things. I felt that with council, kind of described what Public Works actually does, what we do it with, as far as how many full-time employees, part-time employees. Talked about our water and sewer. I'll hit on those just a little bit. The important thing for you to remember on our water system, water is supplied to the residents here in the city by five wells. There is no storage. So your ISOs, which is your insurance rates that you pay on your houses and your businesses, is based on what the pumps can actually produce in the given lines. There is no storage, so if we lost power or anything else, there is no storage within the city. We do have three backup generators on three of the wells. So far, that has been enough, but there is concerns, especially from the fire department, that if you have a major fire in the downtown, that there could be problems. Historically, in the summer months, we have never fired up more than three, three pumps at any one time to cover all of our watering needs, and that includes landscaping and all of that. In the winter months, we are usually running one pump at a time. The pumps are set up, three of them are set up, where we can run them independently, together, or in series, depending on needs. And what I mean by series is they actually have a very primitive SCADA system, where if a pump hits its max, it will dial up the other pump, the next pump in line will then kick on and supply whatever remaining needs the system needs. On the sewer system, you've heard us and people talk about major sewer projects. The city's under a compliance scheduled to reduce our inflow and infiltration, which is the groundwater that is getting into our sewer system, by 100% by 2020. We have been diligently acting on that since the permit went involved, which was in 2015. We are in the final stages of what I would classify as phase one of that project to do that. The last trunk line that needed attention was on 285. That was completed this year. The only thing that's outstanding on that particular trunk line is just some CIP, which is Kierkegaard Place pipe that needs to go in, and that's scheduled to begin in January, around the 21st. From there, this year's project will be more service lines and rehabilitation of manholes. So all the big lines, the ones that supply all of the sewage to the plants have been taken care of. We are now dealing with the smaller lines that function more into the residential. The good news is there hasn't been a lot of I and I going through those lines. We do have an incredible amount of I and I that come in through the manholes, so that's where we're going to be concentrating the bulk of our monies, is replacing as many manholes as we can. So, but as far as our year-end review, started out the year, we hired a street supervisor. I had been doing it for several years. Really got more, where I wasn't able to spend as much time in the field with the guys as I needed to. So we did hire, we promoted from within, hired a gentleman, or promoted more to the point, and he's doing a pretty good job, still learning. The street crews, they handle everything that has to deal with the streets and signage within the community. They also have the task of conducting any and all of the events, stampede, prepping things for the parks and all of that. They also, if somebody, we get a work order for a property cleanup, they conduct those, which can go anywhere from property demos. We've demoed a couple of houses a few years ago, to basically just weed removal and trash and debris removal. This year, they completed 23 of those. We also did another city cleanup days. My crew take, took in nine 30-yard dumpsters during those, that day and a half. And then we did a, what was originally supposed to be a two-week alley service, where we'd drive around and pick up people that couldn't get to the cleanup days, pick their debris and stuff up in the alleys. That turned into a one-month project, and we got 900 cubic yards of material for, so it, it became a major project for us. This last year, city, we pulled in all of the picnic tables and stuff from the parks. Redid them all, frames, wood, everything, and got them back out. We also give a little shout-out to Stones up in center. They donated fertilizer for all the parks. So that's the first time we've actually had fertilizer in about five years for the parks. So that was a huge donation. The way that worked is they donated, donated enough fertilizer for our parks, as well as the high school, with the, the agreement that we and our operators would actually do the spreading. So it worked out good for us. This year, the water, we did some more meter reading and just finished up on the last of the yearly testing and meter reading for the year. We completed a fire hydrant flow for the ISO ratings. We did a few service line taps for new construction, and we are working on filling the state's requirement for backflow compliance for all of our commercial users. The state decided that all commercial users must have an approved backflow device installed, so we are kind of working and trying to gain compliance with that. The sewer, like I said, the big projects are the, what we do as far as the right-of-way project, that's the big one, the rest of the sewer. We did some, some smaller things, and then on the treatment, we had to replace a blower and an aerator this year, so that was, those are fairly expensive. As far as projects, projects, we, of course, had the sewer project, Penpada, excuse me, Pentada Sewer, Storm Sewer. We were having some problems out on Pentada. We wound up replacing almost 1,100 feet of the storm sewer through there. All four of the manholes that basically encompass anywhere within residence, from the entrance to where it turns and goes back towards the golf course. So, and that's, there was some roots and stuff in that line, so we did that. Forrest mentioned already about the water efficiency grant, already talked to you about proximity malt, and we did, got the final report. We did a water leak study for our water system to see, so we'd be able to better prioritize where our water leaks are and be able to prioritize repairs. And that was a request that council had for us. So with that, I'll open it up if anybody has any questions.
I'd just like to say thank you.
You're welcome.
I think we've asked a lot from your crew this year. We've delivered, and I appreciate that.
I appreciate that. Thank you. Thank you. Good job. Thank you.
City clerk?
Are you guys tired here after we talked?
No.
First thing here, it's high, bro.
So you all have my report. I'll just touch on a few highlights. Business license that we've taken in this year has been 16 new businesses. 12 of those have been home-based or computer, computer-based businesses. Contractor license, I have 24 new contractor licenses within the city this year. 37 new vendors that have come into the city. That includes the Farmer's Market new vendors, the Crane Fest new vendors, Holiday Fest, all the different festivals that we have. New vendors have come in with all the existing vendors as well. We have, I've been working on filing system. When I got here, there wasn't a whole lot of filing system in place, so I've been working on putting together a filing system. And I'm also working on updating our e-file documents. So I'm trying to transpose all the files that we do, or that we did have and that we do have now, into our e-file system, so that they're readily available for all departments to look at through the e-filing system. Went through getting a new judge this year. It was, it was a fun learning process, working with the previous judge, and now with the new judge, it's, I'm learning a lot more, and I really appreciate having her here. Judge Zollers has been a good fit. Court, we had court yesterday, and I think it went pretty smooth. I think it went pretty smooth yesterday. Worked on elections, my first election year, and I think the elections went pretty smooth this year. In the court department, we had 1,417 cases this year. In my report, you'll see that those are broken out into traffic, different traffic violations, criminal and code violations. Criminal that is presented to the municipal court would be your minor misdemeanors, drug paraphernalia, trespassing, minor theft, and then your code violations are also in there. And at that, just working hard at getting things moving for 2018. And if you have any questions, I am more than happy to answer.
Just like to say that it's been a big year. I know you came in and cleaned up a lot of processes, and I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's gonna be a learning year for all of us. It's gonna be a good year. How you doing?
Fortunately, Jim couldn't make it today. So you have his report, obviously. I'd just like to touch on, a year and a half ago, there was no IT department. Now you have three full-time staff, proper security, backups, user management, file management, the whole kit and caboodle, proper computers, up to date. Yeah. Any questions, I'll try my best to answer them.
As I mentioned before, I was, I didn't know you were gonna make a presentation, but I'll repeat it to you. I went through in as much detail and understanding as I possibly could with your extremely extensive report and I was very impressed.
That was Jim's report, bud.
Okay. With, with everything that, that was done and accomplished and done in IT fashion with extreme detail. But it, it was very impressive. I'm gonna study it some more and find out what it really means.
Yeah, that's how you go from nothing to a full IT department. Data center and everything.
Great job.
2017 was a year change. I mean, I keep on looking at each department as they come up and give their presentations and there's just been so much that's been done by every single department. And once again, IT's done an outstanding job. And we had a pretty big mess when IT walked on. We had a lot of ransomware on our computers and we didn't exactly know how to address that. And so I know that Jim and his crew walked on the site and were able to kind of help us out with that and, and move us in a, in a positive direction because of the fact that we were able to collaborate with Alamosa. So I appreciate that and I hope we pass that on to Jim as well.
I will.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Mika.
I'm freezing back there in the corner. I apologize for my phone being crazy. I don't know what was happening. I silenced the phone but forgot the watch and then the phone and watch wanted to talk to each other. So, I gotta summarize how my year's been. Kids Connection is a lot of fun. Every day I walk into, you never know what's gonna happen. So I'll just touch on a couple of the cool things that happened throughout 2017. We started our training in, in January of 2017. We have a, a grant with Community Resource Center to help build sustainable organizations. And so we started our first, our first of the training, it's an 18-month training, so we're still going through it and it'll wrap up in the middle of this year. And so in January, we did an organizational assessment and kind of looked at Kids Connection as a whole and tried to figure out where our strengths were, where our weaknesses were, and what we could do to bring the entire organization, like, together as a whole organization so that the entire thing was as, as strong as it could possibly be. So that's been a really fun learning process and you'll see throughout the, the timeline how we've changed and looked at different types of trainings. In February, we switched over what was previously our after-school snack program. So the kids would come in and it was basically like a juice and a bag of Ritz crackers. We switched it over and we're now doing an after-school meal program. So it's everything that the USDA constitutes as an official meal. So that before our kids leave home in the evening, they have that additional meal in their stomachs because some of them are going home and they don't have that much food at home to keep them and hold them over until the next day when they go to school to have breakfast. So we provide that extra meal for them every day after school. In March, we did another CRC training and it was focused on strategic planning. We took a trip to Denver for a grant that we had applied for through the Donald K. Foundation. And this grant was an opportunity for Kids Connection to offer more on Friday than what we are already offering. Long story short, we didn't end up getting the grant, but it was nice to be able to take a student with us to kind of figure out what the kids want and what we could do to make it a place that they actually wanted to be at. March was our spring break month also. We partnered with the AmeriCorps volunteers and the Water Conserv, or the Rio Grande Conservation Education Initiative and Alpine Achievers. And we did a water conservation camp in Del Norte, two of the days during spring break. And so we went down to the river in Del Norte and they had this cool little setup for us so the kids could understand how the water is coming down off of the watershed and what happens when it comes down and where it goes. So they got to set up little farms and watch the water wash through and kind of, if we didn't have the river system the way that it is, it would kind of just wipe everything out. So they got a good lesson in, in how the watershed works. We also did a big trash cleanup there in Del Norte for them because the River Walk was a pretty big mess. My kids really love cleaning up trash, I don't know why. You give them a bag and they get really excited about what they can possibly find. So we do a lot of trash cleanup. In April, we helped plant two new trees at Marsh Park. That's with the city's Arbor Day celebration. And Rob is always really amazing at saying, hey, this is the day we're gonna do it, can you have kids over? And the kids basically just shovel some dirt into a hole. This year, we had a kid climb into the hole because he felt like he needed to be in there. We had a fun group this year. But we've gotten to do that for the last couple of years, so we're really excited. We started, I think the first year we started, we were at the skate park. So we got to plant the trees over at the skate park. And I saw kids that come back and they're like, we have to plant those. So we've done it for the last three years that I've been with Kids Connection. So in April, we also, I wrote a grant to, out of the All Cop Foundation and asked for some operational expense help for the 2017 and 2018 year. They agreed to give us $30,000 for 2017 and $30,000 for 2018. So we will have $30,000 coming in any day now for 2018. So we're moving forward a little bit. We also hosted a community forum that was not a very good success. We did an ice cream social and had nobody show up other than my staff and their children. They had two middle school children though, so they gave us some insight as to what the middle schoolers might possibly want. But that was one of the things that did not help us in applying for that grant because we just didn't have enough feedback from the kids. May is when we began all of our preparations for summer. You'll notice that we are only open 13 days for May. I closed the last week of school so that the kids are in school most of the day and parents only have to figure out somebody to watch them for the, like, last three hours of the day where we would step in. But that gives me the opportunity to bring in our additional summer staff and fully train them as much as possible before they walk into chaos that following Monday and they're thinking like, what will we be getting ourselves into? During that week-long, week-long training, we do policies and procedures training. We walk them through every potential thing that could come their way so that they have a little bit of an idea. And we go to worst-case scenario just so that they can expect the worst and we hope that we have perfect little angels on that first day. But they will know that these really bad cases do, do happen. We do first days in CPR training and just get them ready for, for what summer will bring. In May, I also presented to the Montavista Kiwanis and to the Rotary Club. And I present to them each year just to kind of give them a heads up and let them know what's going on with Kids Connection, where we are, what our membership numbers are, and if there's anything that we could use some assistance on. And they try to provide that for us. Rotary Club does make some donations to Kids Connection throughout the year when our name is kind of pulled up in the hat and it's our turn to receive some of the funds. And the same thing with Kiwanis. Rotary Club actually, after the presentation, they came and toured the facility. And we just had sick mats that we've just laid on the floor when the kids weren't feeling good. So they purchased a cot for us and they brought it in because they didn't want the kids laying on the floor. We really didn't want the kids staying in the sick room for very long, so it wasn't a huge priority, but they're excited to see that there's something they can lay on other than the ground. June was the beginning of our summer and we partnered up with the Alpine Achievers again. We visited Penetente Canyon and Big Meadows Reservoir. We had two high school helpers that were provided through the school district and a grant that they received for tutors. And some of their tutors stayed at the school and did summer school tutoring. And then they gave us two of them to come and just mentor some of our youth. And they were with us throughout most of the summer. Kids Connection also helped out with KidVenture Summer Camp and we provided lunches for the kids during the summer. We've done that for the last two years. I called Care Insurance and said, KidVenture's coming to town, they're expecting this many kids. And so they set up a special, a special pickup because it doesn't come with our monthly delivery because we don't have enough places to store all the food that they needed. But then I make a trip to Colorado Springs to their warehouse and I pick up the food for KidVenture. And we provide, this year we provided a breakfast snack, a lunch, and an afternoon snack for each day of their camp. So that was, it was a lot of food. It was like, I don't know, like 6,000 pounds of food. On our way back, we were talking about how much we fit into the little Tahoe. Well, I'll probably hear those numbers and it's like, shocks trip. But we touched with that thing in there and every year we're like, we can do this. And we managed to bring it all back and didn't have to go to plan B. So, July, let's see, July, we did the pancake breakfast for Stampede, attended the CRC training at Athens State on Communications and Grant Writing. August, we wrapped up our summer program and we closed for a week before the school year started, just to give my staff kind of a break and to get the building ready for the after-school program again. Just we went to Alamosa and presented to the Alamosa Kiwanis. Since we do service children from Alamosa County, we are able to utilize their services as well. And they provided us with five volunteers to help run games in September for the Potato Fest. In October, we did our poker tournament. November, we had our Thanksgiving feast for our members. December, we helped out with the Holiday Festival. We hosted Santa's workshop, Cookies with Santa. We had the pancake breakfast and ribbon cutting ceremony. And now we are just wrapping up from Christmas break. There's a lot more information in there. And along with everything that we, that I have in this report, we do prep each day for the after-school program. We pick up the kids at 3:45, keep them busy with homework and activities and snack until 6 o'clock. Tear down and clean up the facility every night after the program. I know Mr. Brecker walked in and was like, what are you doing cleaning toilets? I might have to jump in and everyone shares a responsibility. There is not one person in the program that doesn't share it. So with that, if you guys don't have any questions, that's pretty much Kids Connection.
I truly appreciate what you do. I know the time and seeing them zipping in the halls and hurt the classrooms and I thought, but it's you. Thank you very much for what you do. You do a great job.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. A lot of kids really like that place.
Yeah. I enjoy it. Christmas break had me questioning it, but they go back to school next Tuesday, so I will love them again.
Well, 2017 was, once again, a very huge transition moving into that building and everything. And I know we were a little bit short on the building originally. And I appreciate your efforts that you put into that. Bob writing had some tremendous efforts in that as well. It truly was a community effort. We had some local businesses that donated as well. So it really means a lot to this community and in my mind, it's the heart and soul of this community. I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks.
I was just asking, right? You're up, Jim.
I am. Good evening. You guys have, like, everybody have my report and your, my report and your report. And so I'm not gonna go in detail about everything. I'm just gonna give you pretty much a background of who I am and when I started here. So I think I know most of you, most of you know me, kind of. My name is Hyman Taro and I got hired here in March of 2016. And actually, for the first year of 2016, since I got hired, just mostly just getting used to the job and knowing what needs to be changed. In 2017, which was this year that passed, we started adjusting and making these changes that we wanted to do to better our programs. And me personally, my career's been enforcement and recreations. That's, that's where my roots are, pretty much. And one of the things I like recreations is because you get to deal with the community, with the kids. And I believe that recreation is not just about throwing them out there and having, playing, having, have fun, but to teach them and actually find out what's going on there and how can we help this community and how can we help those kids and the families. And with that being said, this past year of 2017, there's been a lot of downs and faults, but our department's been, you know, great and learning from our mistakes and moving forward and growing for the, for the kids. And so there was this program that we've been getting involved a lot with, Rio Grande Prevention Partners, out of Rio Grande. And it's just preventing, it's about preventing the kids, keep them out from drugs, alcohol, tobacco, abuse, anything that you can think of. And our, I think our department focuses a lot of that. And that's why, that's one of, I think that's why kind of, this is, this is what we gotta go with. We gotta stay with this group. And so we've been doing a lot of things and conge, conjunction with them. And one of the things that we came up with and we started working with was the skate night, the family skate night. We've been doing it for, I think, the second time since we started. We're planning another one now in January or early February. We don't know exactly when. But it's just something that we can bring community, not just the kids, not just the parents, but both of the families together to do something fun. And so, and not only that, but we're gonna do other things. We are also in the department, we take care of the, the Sky High facility. So between games and our, so my department's composed myself, which is full-time, and two part-timers. And so my two-part-time is Tony and Kim. Usually with their hours, we try to use them when there's games or activities going on. It happens in the evenings, so most of their hours are in the evenings. When there's nothing going on, of course, they're here in the mornings. We go through inventory, we go through uniforms, we collect uniforms, we hand out uniforms. Same thing with equipment. We make sure the equipment is ready, that we have equipment. And one thing that I don't know if I ever explained it to the board that was here before you, is that our department's not just composed me or Montavista. We have to work with Del Norte, we have to work with Sargent, we have to work with Center, we have to work with Alamosa. And they each one have the recreations director or a director. And so it's a, it's a, it's a work between all of us to come to an agreement to provide those things for our youth and how to make them better. And so a lot of people say, well, why can't you do this? Why can't you do that? Why don't do this? It's just not our department. It's just that we have to consider other departments to around, surround us that sometimes prevent us from doing a lot of changes. But nevertheless, I think we are making some changes, we are making some differences and we are growing little by little. The other focus was on youth, our adult programs. We have our basketball program going on. We started a volleyball program. We're gonna try to push again with our softball program this summer. I know it was, it was big here a couple of years back and so we wanna bring it back. And, and other, other programs that we have in mind, we wanna try it and, and see if we it'll work out. Let's see. Also in your report, you will see some reports from, you know, just some financials of kind of thing of what I keep personally. This is not, this is not an official report, but this is something that I like to keep in my department of, you know, how much we collect from Pee Wee Sports and how much is spent on Pee Wee Sports from what we collected. Same thing with adults, how much we collecting from the adult programs and how much we're spending. And, and with the Sky High rentals, also with the special events like Potato Fest and the tournaments, like Dutch Bowl and stuff like that. And so like I say, it's not a, it's just more like... And so, like I say, it's not a, it's just more like most of the draft of what things are happening, so. But I can tell you that we are trying to, we are not spending more than what is coming in, and to us, it's a plus, so. And we're trying to fix that a little more. Sometimes we wish we have our own facility so we don't have to use other facilities and spend money there, but for now, this is what we got, and we try to work with that. And like I always say, you know, if you guys have any questions, any concerns from you or from the community, I'm always open to, you know, any suggestions, any ideas, because if I don't hear it from anybody, I'm thinking that I'm doing everything right. I know that I'm not perfect, but if I don't hear it, then to me and to our department, it seems like we're doing okay. But if we don't hear somebody else that maybe you can do this, maybe you can do that, we won't try it, so. If you have any questions, concerns, I'm here to answer them.
You guys are in charge of the McMonville Building, too, right?
No, sir.
That's county stuff?
That is county.
Okay. You're just responsible if somebody's looking to get in?
Usually they call us, and we refer them to the county.
You don't have to tell that girl.
Yeah, and actually, we get contact a lot for that, yeah.
Just like to say once again, a lot of transition 2017. One of the feedback that I got was the sign-up procedures for the different events was a lot smoother this year, and there was quite a number of people that really appreciated that, so, thanks.
Thank you.
Appreciate all your work you did with the CTC, RGPP, and when you were talking about the drug prevention and all that. And the Skate Nights were a big success, and maybe if you do one in January, it could be on the ice.
Yeah, and we're planning on that, so. That's our plan.
Is it finally cold enough?
It's cold.
It's cold, but it's cold.
It's a struggle, but I go out and walk on it, and I figured it'll hold me, you know. We're probably okay with the little kids, so. Yeah, it's good. It's been resurfaced, and it looks good. But yeah, that might work.
We'll get in touch with that. Thank you.
Council Committee, City Commission, Council Reports, and City Teacher. What's that? It's HR. HR? Is she here? Sorry, wasn't on this one. And I'm not fast enough to do this. I messed it up. Oh.
Good evening. So I included just basically a list of my duties, what I do here. I'm HR on payroll. I kind of go hand-in-hand with Forrest, and he's been super patient with me through this learning process. It's been different for me. I'm used to private sector. I didn't realize what a difference government was. It's been interesting. So I guess my biggest accomplishments this year or in 2017 were we were able to implement a new payroll system. Our previous one, there were constants, inconsistencies in payroll. We've had deductions like health, medical, general vision, all that just kind of pop up all of a sudden, and no one ever had them. We could never figure out what was going on. So what used to take me three to four days to process payroll is now taking me two days, but it's going to keep getting faster as we implement this. We are in our third payroll with them, and it's ADP, and we've had a few bumps along the way, but we've worked them out with them, and hopefully we'll be able to process payroll in a more efficient manner, as well as they're taking care of our taxes for us. I don't have to file those separately at the end of the quarter and at the end of the year. They do that, they do all the reconciliation for that. So that's going to be a big help. And as Forrest had mentioned, we got a new health benefit package for the employees, and it was good that we were able to keep the coverages for the employees the same or better, but decrease the cost significantly. And so far, I haven't heard any rumbles about that. So, and then as HR, as you know, like, I take care of all the files and everything. I help employees with any questions that they have. One thing that was really cool was we had an employee that needed hearing aids. He didn't know where to turn. I was able to help find grant money to help him pay for those, and I think he's still in the process of getting them. But that was kind of cool that I was able to actually help an employee, and that's what I really get, like, my self-fulfillment out of. I really like helping people and being able to do that. 2017, as everyone has said, has been, was a little crazy. Hectic for quite a while, but we had 15 new hires, seven seasonal, and then 13 people left employment with the city. Kind of more than what we hoped for, but mostly, like, our police officers, this is a training ground. They want to get their experience, and they go back with their families. So that was a good chunk of it. The other thing we were able to do for employees was get them all these little fitness trackers for no cost to the city. With Cigna, we had a health plan or a health fund. They gave us so much money to use on health-related functions, and so at the end of the year, we needed to use it. And I just asked employees, like, what would you like from this? And we decided the fitness trackers, because then this way we can get people active. They can be up and moving, they're actually paying attention to what they're doing. They're not just constantly sitting at your desk, like, it has a reminder on it for every 45 minutes to stand up or move a little bit, do something. So it's been... So it's actually been really good, because I've realized, like, nights I go home, I'm like, oh, I haven't stood up all day, like, what was I doing? You know? So that's kind of cool, and we're hoping maybe as things slow down and we get everything together that we can maybe do competitions, like, you know, walking competitions, or see who, how many people can do how many steps or something like that, just to keep them engaged and kind of have us all work together as a team and get us interacting. That's about it. Do you guys have any questions for me?
Just want to comment on what you just said. It was the answer to me when I asked you a little earlier, why did you get into a job like this? And you made it clear that you like helping people, and you just gave some good examples. So I appreciate that.
I know that. You've also done some things that are confidential, haven't really been out in the public, but it's been pretty tough for you to do those things, and I appreciate you stepping up, doing the job that you did. And I know that alongside of the fun stuff, there was also some rough stuff, so thanks a lot.
Thank you.
Did I forget anybody? I apologize for that. Partying. Council Committee? Council Reports? Are there any reports?
Anything you want to add? Just glad to be here and facing the challenges ahead. Looking forward to it.
I want to personally thank everybody for showing up tonight and all your support throughout the whole election and supporting the city the way you have in the past. It is our town, and that's what we need to do, is build our town back up. And I just want to say thank you for everything that everybody has done, and I'm looking forward to this as well. It's definitely going to be a challenge. 2017 was a challenge for a lot of things, but let's ride this pony. Let's go.
I totally echo what the mayor just said. 2017 saw a tremendous amount of change, and government's a bit inflexible. It just doesn't seem to want to bend. And so the fact that our employees stepped up, did their jobs, department heads, were a huge part of that. And that means a lot to me, and we've seen a tremendous amount of change. We're not nearly where we want to be, and it's going to be a long road ahead. But 2018, it might be tough, but it's going to be a good year.
It will get better. Maida, is that all I've got?
Yes, sir. So at the first meeting, you'll need to recess your meeting, and then at the second meeting, you'll adjourn.
Okay, so I can go, like, we recessed this meeting?
All right. About that.